The Planning Commission regular meeting of Tuesday, February 12, 2019, ended session. We would, as customary, ask everyone to silence their cellphones. And we would ask for a roll call from the clerk.
Let the record reflect that all commission members are present.
All right. And then we have the approval of the last meeting's minutes. Does any commissioner have a comment, correction? If not, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve. I'll second that.
Carried by unanimous vote.
And we will ask for the, if there's a director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items for you this afternoon. First, I'd like to welcome our newest planning commissioner to his first meeting. Ed Wisebroad joins us, and I'd like to extend our appreciation for your volunteerism to help on the planning commission. We really look forward to working with you over the next few years. In addition, the city council last week heard the item for the shops at Coronado that you heard at your prior meeting. They did approve that project, the parking plan for it, by unanimous vote. And so that's all I have for you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have any oral communication from any item not on the agenda or from members of the public who are unable to stay for an agenda item? Seeing none, we will move into our first item and only item. And that is PC 2018-08 and CP 2018-03, Logo's Youth Center. Request for a major special use permit, parking plan, and coastal development for a youth center at 970 C Avenue in the R3P multiple-family residential with parking overlay zone. Do any of the members have any expertise?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chair, I was on the Design Review Commission last year, I believe, November, December timeframe. We heard this item only from a design standpoint, and it passed that commission. So that's my disclosure.
All right. That doesn't present any problem. Okay. Any other?
I just, on my own, I went onto the Internet to just look up anything I could about TYL Foundation. Couldn't really find anything, just to let you know.
Christopher Roy now.
I visited the site, same thing on the Internet, did do some research there, and then, of course, read as much correspondence as I could that is on the various sites in town.
All right. Thank you. And I have no disclosures to make. Why don't we, before we begin, focus on have the general counsel define the issue that's before us today, so that we're focused on that?
You know, I think we should actually go into the staff presentation and then if there's any legal questions along the lines of what's...
What was the legal question? It's just that we're supposed to look at the parking issue. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to define that before we start.
The parking issue, there also is the coastal permit that Planning Commission will need to decide on, as well as making a recommendation to council on a special use permit, since this is in a residential zone.
Okay. And then the staff presentation?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners, members of the public and staff. My name is Beth Windle. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. The issue before you is whether to approve a resolution recommending approval of a major special use permit and parking plan for Logo's Youth Center to City Council. A major special use permit is commonly known as an MSUP. Also, you'll consider the approval of a coastal development permit by the adoption of a resolution as final action unless it is appealed to the City Council. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, consider testimony, and adopt a resolution recommending approval of an MSUP and parking plan to the City Council, as well as approval of a resolution approving a coastal development permit. The Logo's Youth Center is a proposed private youth center located at 970 C Avenue. Its mission is to serve middle and high school-aged members of the community and their families, providing educational and religious programming to the youth of Coronado. A parking plan is required for non-residential development on a property in residential zones. A coastal development permit is required for all projects in the city that require an MSUP. The MSUP is required to allow a philanthropic institution to be located in the R3/P zone. The parking plan and MSUP will be reviewed first by the Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council. The project design was approved by Design Review Commission on November 28, 2018. The purpose of the issuance of a major special use permit is to review and where necessary, impose special conditions on the creation and maintenance of designated uses, which involve special site or design requirements, operating characteristics, or potential adverse effects on the surrounding areas. Because the Coronado Municipal Code does not include a youth designation for a youth center, staff has determined that the philanthropic institution use is the most appropriate land use designation for this particular project. The project serves school-aged youth in the community and is owned and operated by a nonprofit foundation. Because this youth most closely acts as a philanthropic institution, it would be conditionally allowed as an MSUP. The applicant submits that the primary activity and focus of the proposed youth educational and religious programming will be held on Tuesdays through Sundays. The proposed operational schedule provided by the applicant outlines youth educational and religious programming. Standard condition number seven in the resolution includes the condition of hours of operation shall be the following: Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for after-school and youth programming, and on Saturdays and Sundays from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for youth ministry and recreation. A proposed schedule for the parking garage has been provided by the applicant, with the parking garage open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Logo staff will have priority parking during operational hours, with all other spots free and open to the public. The garage would be reserved for attendees at Grand Memorial on Sunday mornings. A full review of the parking plan will be provided later in this presentation. The proposed project would replace an existing, single-story office building that currently houses Logo's College, Coronado Chamber of Commerce, Club Wellness, True Massage, and two doctor's offices. There are currently 11 angled surface parking spaces on the parcel located off the alley behind the office building. The surrounding uses are commercial, multifamily residential, churches, and schools. There's a four-unit multifamily residential condominium building located immediately adjacent north of the project site. Grand Memorial Church is located across C Avenue. The zoning for this site is R3-P, which is multiple-family residential with a parking overlay zone. Surrounding zoning is primarily commercial, as you can see on the zoning map. Excuse me, I need to go back one. The CMC permits philanthropic institutions in the R3-P with an MSUP and a parking plan. The project proposes to construct a new story, a new two-story youth center with one level of underground parking, providing 29 parking spaces accessed off the alley. The first floor includes a middle school room with an ancillary kitchen, storage and restroom areas, an indoor basketball court, and outdoor patios with an interior square footage of 5,400. The second floor would consist of a high school room, outdoor deck, and restrooms with an interior square footage of 4,504, for approximately 9,900 square feet. A total FAR of .71 is proposed, where up to .9 is allowed. The proposed project includes design elements and architectural details similarly articulated to Grand Memorial Presbyterian Church across C Avenue, and was approved by the Design Review Commission on November of 2018. The proposed project was designed to minimize potential impacts to the neighborhood, including the residential building to the north, by eliminating any building openings such as windows, doors, or balconies facing the property with generous setbacks and a floor-area ratio, which does not build out the entire site. Additionally, the proposed ramp leading to the underground parking was designed to buffer the adjacent residential building. Here you can see on the street-level plan the location of the parking ramp along the north side of the building with access taken from the alley. In the first-floor plan, you can see where it would include a middle school room with an ancillary kitchen, storage, and restroom areas, the indoor basketball court, and outdoor patios with an interior square footage of 5,400. Here you can see the second-floor plan would consist of a high school room, an outdoor deck, and restrooms, and interior square footage of 4,504. You can see the graphic elevations depicting the south elevation facing 10th Street and east elevation facing C Avenue. You will see entrances to the building, patio areas, and windows facing the streets. You can also see the buffered area between the parking ramp and the adjacent residential Here you can see the graphic elevation depicting the west elevation, facing the alley and including the back building exit, screened trash pickup areas, and entrance ramp to the underground parking garage. The north elevation faces the multiple-family residential building access to the site, adjacent to the site, excuse me. You will see that there are no openings on the north side of the building to minimize impacts to the residents. Pursuant to the Coronado Municipal Code, the Planning Commission is to review the proposed parking plan and determine if it is consistent with all the requirements of Chapter 86.58 for off-street parking, and then make recommendation to City Council. The parking for this project is provided by 29 below-grade basement-level parking spaces enclosed in the building's structure. Two of the spaces are ADA-accessible, including one van-accessible parking space. Additionally, there are three compact parking spaces labeled on the plans. Ingress and egress is provided by a ramp down the lower-level basement parking area from the alley. Because there is no specified parking requirements for a philanthropic institution land use designation, the final determination for the minimum number of parking spaces is established by the Planning Commission, based upon the requirements of the most comparable use. Staff recommends the schools and classrooms use designation as described in CMC Chapter 86.58.0300. This is the primary intended use for the project, as it is to serve middle and high school students in an educational capacity. It is recommended the parking requirement be established at one parking space per two employees, plus one parking space per five students. The applicant submits that one full-time, one part-time, and five rotating volunteers will be onsite during operational hours, with up to 50 students on the weekend using the youth center. With these estimates, according to the code, 14 parking spaces is the minimum parking requirement for this project, with 29 spaces being proposed. The applicant submits that the remaining unused spaces will be open to the public for use at no charge but reserved on Sunday mornings for service attendees at Grand Memorial. Property owners within 300 feet of this parcel have been notified of the public hearing. Staff received a total of four letters or emails and a number of phone calls and counter visits related to this application. Initially, the most vocal opponents of this project were neighbors immediately adjacent to the north of the property and the residential condominiums. However, they have since relayed that they are not in opposition since reviewing the most recent plans, staff report, and development conditions proposed by staff. There are two additional blue sheets that have been submitted to staff more recently and additional public comments available to you. Public comment received includes concerns related to the following issues you can see on the screen. Increased vehicular traffic. Staff finds that the traffic volume will increase by approximately 84 average daily trips with the new use, according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trip-generation rates. The proposed parking design and plan is expected to increase the safety of vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists in comparison to what currently exists. Pedestrian and bicycle safety. There are 11 existing angled surface parking spaces on this site, requiring vehicles to back out of the parking spaces from a single driveway onto a one-way alley. The proposed parking plan and design allows for increased sightlines and distances and safer ingress and egress from the garage. Vehicles may enter, turn around, and exit straight out, facing into the alley via vehicle ramp with almost 40-foot distance at grade, allowing for greater visibility and safety. Further, city engineering staff ran a traffic collision report from 1999 to 2017 and found five minor incidents of collision in the area of 19th Street between Orange Avenue and C Avenue near the alley. Because of this, staff finds that the proposed project design will address and satisfy the vehicular traffic and bicycle pedestrian safety concerns. Building occupancy. The building occupancy is cumulative room occupancy based on a particular room's dimension and use. Preliminary estimates for this plan show building occupancy at approximately 320 persons maximum. Overnight accommodations. Staff received numerous questions regarding showers and overnight accommodations. There are no proposed showers in the building plans, nor proposed sleeping accommodations. Overnight accommodations have been expressly prohibited in Permit Condition 12 listed in the resolution. Event and banquet use has been expressly prohibited in Condition Number 13 listed in the resolution. Noise and amplified sound has been expressly prohibited in Permit Condition 14 in the resolution. Commercial use of the property. Commercial use is excluded in R3/P zones and not included in a philanthropic institutional Staff has determined facts exist to support the findings to recommend approval of the MSUP and parking plan to the City Council as follows. The use as proposed is consistent with the general plan and zoning regulations as a philanthropic institution permitted in this zone with a major special use permit. The proposed project replaces a nonhistoric building with a two-story structure that includes the required and additional parking available free to the public during operating hours. The proposed use is consistent with surrounding uses and meets all development standards. Conditions are placed in the resolution to minimize impacts of the project on neighboring properties. And finally, adequate facilities and services exist to support the use, with public parking included, and activities limited with imposed conditions. A coastal development permit is also required for all development involving an MSUP in accordance with the Coronado Municipal Code. The purpose of the coastal permit is to ensure the development is consistent with the City of Coronado Local Coastal Program, land use plan, and local coastal policies. Staff finds the proposed project will not have a significant adverse impact, sorry, a significant adverse effect either individually or cumulatively on coastal resources or on public access to or along the coast. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council approval of a major special use permit and parking plan with conditions to allow the development of a new Logo's Youth Center located at 970 C Avenue. Staff also recommends adoption of a resolution approving the coastal permit. The suggested findings are in the resolutions attached to the staff report. This concludes staff presentation. The applicant is in attendance, and staff is available for any questions.
Do I have questions from commissioners?
I've got one for the staff. You mentioned special use permit, and it's going to be called philanthropic, so no commercial is allowed?
That's correct.
Does that mean no for-profit events allowed?
That is correct.
Good. Thank you.
I do have a question about the parking. Underground, it's going to have a gate on it.
Yes.
They said that excess parking was going to be available to basically anybody who wanted it during normal operating hours. How's that going to work exactly if it's gated? And just kind of curious.
Yeah, so we actually, we asked this question specifically of the applicant, and there would be a retractable gate that would, this is proposed at this point, that would open upon, I guess, coming up close, it's like a retractable coiled type gate. And I guess they would be evaluating the use. I think that there were approximately, what was it, five potential staff, volunteers, part-time, full-time, that would require the spots, and then any additional would be free and open to the public. They would have to monitor that to ensure that the parking is correctly allocated, but at this time, we believe that that would be efficient.
Okay.
Commissioner Roy?
May I ask a question? I'm still concerned about the parking. If it is gated, how exactly would, let's say I want to go to Clayton's on the corner, can I park in there, and how would I get in? I mean, is there...
Based on staff centers, the applicant is here if they want to address it, but based on staff center standing on our conversation, it would be a type of gate that would be closed, and then it would automatically come as you approach, right?
Oh, so it's part of that.
And then it would be locked at night or during a non-operational hours.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
On the occupancy max, is that based on fire code? So 320 people for a 10,000-square-foot facility?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be limited by fire code?
So that was based on our conversation with our building inspector, and those are based on the fire codes. That would then need to be, that would be brought before those limitations, those, I mean, I need to defer to Jesse Brown on that one.
Yeah, sure. So we spoke with the head of our building department regarding this issue and looked at the building tables, and basically went up. An occupant load for a building is established through the building permit process, so various rates are applied to different uses and different areas of a building, and that creates the overall occupant load for that room, which then tells you how wide your door openings need to be, how many exits you need to have. So we sat down, because there was the article in the Eagle that suggested there could be up to 1,000 people based on the restroom facilities. That's not really how it works, though. You do it based on the design of each room. And so when I sat down with our building official yesterday, we came up with about 320 maximum for the, for the structure.
So if you wanted to line chairs up and have a presentation, for example, in one of those larger rooms, you could theoretically exceed the 320 probably, right?
Technically, I guess you could, but the building will be posted with the signs that you typically see in restaurants. I'm sure there's one right here, maximum occupancy 99. So that's all, if staff was, found out that that was not being adhered to, you know, if there were multiple violations with the fire department, you know, that's, that's how the building was designed. So then we would have to go back and have issues with the way the building's designed. It would be a much larger issue than just the use.
And then on the, there's some really nice patios and outside spaces. Is that included in the 320? There's a very large deck, that's what, is it 2,000 square feet?
No, it only looks at interior space that has a typical use.
Saying want to stay on, we're not really discussing the design at all of the building, just strictly the parking plan.
Correct. So we're looking at the parking lot, we're looking at whether a major special use permit should be granted.
I got that, yeah.
And then, of course, the coastal commission permit.
Define banquet.
Unless the term is defined in the Coronado Municipal Code definition section, which I don't believe it is, the term, we then reference the Merriam-Webster Dictionary, which is a standard planning technique, and I could look that up for you, but that would be the definition of banquet, if there was a question whether or not a banquet or an event. We would go back to that definition, maybe...
So substantial kitchen, which I get it, and there, you know, going to be a lot of basketball and stuff like that, but if you maxed out that 320, and if it's philanthropic, I know, is banquet have a commercial connotation, or can there be a feeding lots of people coming in for an event kind of situation?
I can address that. So one potential condition that could be added to this that isn't currently is that the kitchen facility shall not be rented out or made available for any for-profit or commercial venture. If you wanted to include that, you could make that motion.
So...
And include that in the conditions of this.
Obviously, maybe it's a question for Graham, but there's no intent for wedding receptions, that sort of thing?
Those...
Is that excluded?
Yes, that, those are currently excluded in the conditions as written.
Yeah, I'd like to, when, when this project was first proposed to the city, we received plans in 2016. It was a much larger project. The second floor included basically a banquet facility where we anticipated a lot of weddings. It's a residential zone. Staff's concerned with that type of activity in a residential zone, so we added the condition to prohibit any type of banquet activity such as that.
I think that's all I have for now.
Then I have a couple of questions, perhaps. You may want to defer them to the applicant, but is there going to be a posting of hours when it'll be available to the public? I think you said it's only available during their non-operating hours, right, the parking?
That is a great question for the applicant.
Okay. And one other question, has the applicant considered, my experience in that area is that the difficulty in driving down that alley is when you reach 10th Street. Seeing to your left and right is difficult, and especially with the sidewalk so close. Has there been any consideration of putting mirrors? You often see the oval mirror so you can see in both directions. Do you know if that's been considered?
That hasn't been discussed. We could ask the applicant, but I think that they would be open to that, based on our conversation to this point.
And engineering staff reviewed the plans and didn't suggest that as a condition of approval, maybe based on the fact that there was, what, five minor accidents in the last 18 years?
Yeah, but just from using that alley, that, the sightlines going left and right are difficult on the sidewalk, so I'll ask the applicant about that. Also, on the parking, it is only after hours, is there, and there'll be a posting, did anyone, do you know if the applicant ever considered having the ramp exit C Street or any other place other than the alley?
So staff has considered other opportunities for that, the ramp, and based on the Coronado Municipal Code, unless there is no alley access, unless there is no alley, then the parking ramp could be potentially permitted, but because within the Coronado Municipal Code, you are wanting, it's written in order to reduce curb cuts and accesses on main streets. Now, because there is an alley that has access to this site, it is required that it be accessed off the alley.
Is, is that something that can be, a variance provided for, or is that something that cannot be changed?
Mr. Chairman, it would be unlikely that we can make the necessary findings to support a variance. Ordinarily, to approve a variance, you'd have to make a finding there's something physically unusual about a lot related to its size, shape, or topography. None of those conditions really exist here. I would add that in staff's opinion, an alley access is preferable for several reasons. One, it doesn't displace public parking spots along the street, and secondarily, it reduces friction between, you know, automobile, other automobiles that are traveling, their cars and pedestrians, where they expect to see them coming out from the alley, adding another point of, egress and ingress could exacerbate that friction. So at least from our perspective, we think alley access is... So at least from our perspective, we think alley access is probably superior in this case.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think there's any question that it's superior to what exists now with the backing out, if anybody's used it. I just wondered if there were options available. All right, that's all I have, does anybody else have a question?
One more question, please.
Mr. Boyd?
I was just adding thought to the kitchen. Exactly how is the kitchen going to be used? What is it for?
That might be a good question for the applicant.
I'll hold it for the applicant. And then on the additional conditions, I see that there are a number of conditions. Should we also add the verbiage that there, we've got point 13, there shall be no banquet use onsite. Should we also include in no alcohol use? Should that word be included in that condition? And also, I know we do not have any smoking in Coronado. Should we also add that as a condition for inside this building, that there would be no smoking?
That's a great question. I'm, maybe Jesse can...
That's up to your purview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And is the applicant present and want to make a presentation?
Good afternoon, John Dominey from Doma Studio Architects. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear our project. Really, that was a great presentation that did a great job of describing what our project is. The questions we've seen come forward really have very little to do with the architecture. I'm happy to answer any questions that do, but I feel like what might answer everyone's questions is to have Pastor David come up and describe a little bit of the history, how this came to be, and what the proposed use of the project. There's been a lot of questions and a lot of mystery in the community and people trying to guess what this is about, so I feel like hearing it directly from Pastor David may help clear up some of the concerns that we have so far. So perhaps that...
Could we, first, let's see if we have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Boyd, yeah?
I do have a question. So the 10th Street, was it possible to have a ramp coming off of 10th, coming down and into the parking structure? Is there not enough length in that lot to have their appropriate grade?
It's, from a traffic engineering standpoint, between the, between C Street and the alley, you have a very short distance and doing a curb cut between those two points, you do not have good sightlines, that makes it worse. Doing it exactly opposite of where we are onto C Street was a possibility, but as staff suggested, that really is more of a hazard to the community to put that crossing the sidewalk. There are a lot of kids in that street going up and down the sidewalk, so really, we're trying to do the safest solution possible and visually the nicest for the community.
Yeah, the alley one way, everybody has to come down and figure out to come from, you know, that end to come in, but yeah, not much you can do about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, do you have anything? Could you answer my question about posting? Are you going to post some hours that is available to the public?
Yes, we will absolutely, no problem. We'll post hours outside the parking garage to let everyone know what time it's available and what time it's not, as well as the staff, parking spaces can be labeled as staff only. And the discussion so far is the gate can be opened in the morning during business hours and just closed at night when it's closed. So that really makes it easy for someone to pull up and pull in the parking garage. The gate would essentially be out of the way at that point.
So your expectation is that the public can use it during the hours you're open?
In the excess, the excess parking that's available, yes.
So it will close basically at nine o'clock?
Correct.
On those dates that you're open at nine?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? No, then let's, perhaps the pastor would like to...
Good afternoon. Thank you again for entertaining the possibility of this project. I've been here in Coronado for a little over 25 years and one of the greatest challenges to having a faith community without a parking lot is evident. Parking in this town is, is a challenge, any way, shape, or form. And I always thought it would be wonderful if we could add some kind of a parking lot. And actually, I prayed to that end for the past 25 years. When the property first came up available across the street, we saw the opportunity to really create something that would be a blessing for the community. And so we got together, dream team, and, and we brainstormed and we thought, what, you know, what can we do here? We've got one chance to do this right, because once something is built, it's built. And so we came up with this great plan to add some, the, the first and foremost was the opportunity to build a significant youth center. That's really what drove the purchase of the property to begin with, to create a facility for the youth of Coronado where they could come after school, where they could engage in supervised activity that would be centered around the teachings of our faith. That was first and foremost. We thought, but if we're going to do this, let's add parking. And so initially, we talked about doing two levels below grade and two levels above grade. And the two levels below grade, the lowest would be parking, the, the second level would be actually the youth facility that would be underground. We thought that would be great for a number of reasons, not the least of which would be sound mitigation. And then we thought at the grade level, wouldn't it be great if we could put some small buildings, or small offices in there and maybe even move our thrift cottage over there? We have the thrift cottage on the alley there, and we thought it would be a great community service to have a bigger thrift cottage. And then we thought, hey, if we're going to do this, let's put a banquet center on the second floor. Banquet space in this town is very limited and we thought that would yet be another opportunity to service the community and we were thinking that it would be a supplemental source of income for us. Well, as we began talking with the city planners, it became very, very clear that our parking was insufficient if we were going to have a banquet center. And so, hey, what if we put another level of parking in there? Can we do that? I talked to the, to the architects, would it be possible to go down three levels? So, well, anything is possible, let's take a look at it. So we had this crazy idea, we're going to put two levels of parking, the youth center all below grade, the thrift cottage and some office buildings at grade level, and this banquet center. And then we started talking with the city about it and the, the number of parking spots that we would need and who was going to use them. And, and then it was, we've been at this for about five years now. And, and kind of the, the straw that, that kind of sunk our hopes, my hopes, was, well, in order to find out if we can really do this, what we need you to do is sink a well and we need you to pump out the water from that well, extrapolate how much water's going to come out of the hole once you dig it, properly dispose of that water, not through our sewer system. And I actually priced that out and the cost of dropping a well and doing all that would have been over 100 grand with no guarantee from the city planners that even at that point, that we would get approval. And so we took a step back and say, look, you know what? We wanted to do something great for the city, but what our heart's true desire was really to create a facility for the youth. So let's take a couple of steps back. Let's not be so grandiose in our ideas. Let's eliminate the banquet center. Let's eliminate, let's eliminate the, let's go with just one level of parking, because that's not going to go below the water table. I can't even imagine having an opportunity to build a facility there and not put parking there, because parking is such a highly valued commodity and scarce within the community. And the idea was, people would say to me, hey, you could make money on that parking lot. If we wanted to make money, we'd put up condos. It's not about making money, it's about bringing a, a project that will benefit the city. And so we put down 29 parking spots, which will be a wonderful blessing on Sunday morning, but, but through the rest of the week as well. And to leave the gate open at seven o'clock, actually, I think that the, the permit suggested that the gate would go open at seven in the morning and close at 10:00 PM. That's what was presented as Beth, right? That she presented. And so that, that, and, and to have it open, let people use it. And the spots for the staff would be marked so that people drive down there, if there's spots, they can use them. And then we've got this great area for the middle schoolers on the ground floor and that's where the kitchen is. Why a kitchen? A Tuesday at five o'clock, we serve dinner to our middle schoolers. It grieves me to know that for a significant number of those kids, it's the only sit-down dinner that they have all week long. And so we feed them dinner and then they chat around the tables and then after dinner, they go off and they do, they do their activities. We have a very tiny insufficient kitchen in our current parish hall behind the sanctuary. We have opportunity to build something, you got one opportunity, do it right. So let's, let's put a kitchen in there. And primarily, that's what it's going to be used for, is to, is to serve those kids on Tuesday night. Now, are there going to be other opportunities for us to use it? I would hope so. I mean, we have, we have several church-wide facilities throughout the year. To have that as a kitchen, to prepare food for wherever we're going to have a church activity, they're not often, maybe three, four times a year, we do something like that. And when we have those events, we petition the city, we close off the street and we set up tables and chairs on the yard and out into the street and we have a picnic, we have a party. So a wonderful opportunity to have a kitchen like that to better serve those needs. And then the, the basketball court, you know, you can't play unless you have a basketball hoop in your own yard. There's no place for the kids to play basketball after, after school. Can't use the school grounds, liabilities, can't use the public facilities here unless you rent them out. Again, it was to create this space for the youth of Coronado, a place where they could come and not get into trouble, supervised play. You know, I, I imagine and envision after-school tutoring opportunities, maybe even some peer-to-peer counseling opportunities. We've, we've talked with some people in the community that, that would be interested in, in coming in and doing presentations to the kids, maybe, you know, how to start a business or, you know, just anything that we can do to engage the kids and help them become better citizens, not only of our own community, but of the world as well. Nothing more nefarious than that. Any, I'm more than happy to entertain any questions that anyone has.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, Pastor, I've got a question. Who, who, who's on title? Who owns the land?
The land is owned by TYL Foundation.
So how did we get from where we were to you and then to that point?
I'm not sure I follow the question.
Well...
Why is TYL letting us build a youth facility over there?
Yeah, that, that's part of it. We're, we're going to either pass or deny today and we're going to have conditions...
Sure.
For behavior and use of the property.
Sure.
And I'm just wondering, who really owns it and who's going to really run it?
Well, so TYL owns the property and it is leased to Logos, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. And the reason that it was set up that way is that at the time, Grand Memorial was in negotiations with the larger denomination of which we are a part, with regard to our ongoing relationship with them. It was suggested that if we severed ties with the PCUSA, that they would want a portion, if not all, of the property value paid out in cash. And so when the opportunity came for that, to buy the piece of property across the street, the, the church community came together, they had one question. And the question was, who's going to own the property? Is it going to be owned by us or is it going to be owned by a denomination over which we have no control? And I said, well, I cannot answer that question. And so at that point, the TYL Foundation came forward and said, we'll buy the property, we'll hold title so that the denomination can never say that's part of the complex and so that's ours as well. And, and we support the vision that you have for a youth center here in Coronado and the impact that that will have. And so we're willing to step up to the plate and help you to fulfill the vision that you have to create the youth center across the street.
So you're, so you are... Hey, here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're managing the property, so all our conditions would go to you to manage it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, you, you could just...
Is TYL building the building too?
No, sir.
So you guys are, Graham is, is, is building the building?
Well, it's not just Graham Memorial, we, like I said, we, we, we want to open it up to all the Christian youth of the community. In fact, on the, on the Logos board is Father Mike Murphy, who's the priest at the Catholic Church, he's a part of this as well. And so what we will do is we will begin fundraising as soon as we have, if we get the special use permit. I have people in the community who have already come up to me and said, as soon as you have city-approved plans, I will write you a check. There have been people who have included Logos College Incorporated into their estate planning. I have, at this point, I have two families in the community who regularly give me financial gifts that are tax-deductible, used to help pay for our architect fees and any other special use fees that we have. My hope is that once we have approved plans, I, I go to my benefactors and I begin asking them for money. I do not plan on borrowing money to build this facility. And so when I get, it's suspected to be somewhere between an eight and $10 million project, once I have $5 million in the bank, we'll break ground.
And so you're, have a 100-year lease or something from TYL?
Yep.
On the property? But they're the applicant, aren't they the owner? They're, they're shown as the owner right now on the documents?
Right, yes, and they have, and they've, and they've signed off on the project.
So are, so you're leasing, even though you're going to build the structure, you're leasing it, the property from them?
Correct.
Yeah. One other thing, I was just looking at the architectural plans quite a bit and for what you want to do based on density and, and the type of meetings you're having and stuff, we have these large open rooms, not being critical of that, but it seems to me with the number of students that will be coming in afterwards, other than the basketball court, spaces for more comfortable discussions and maybe this is just a rough design, but there's no offices for staff, they're just big, flat, open...
I do believe that there is one office in the plans.
Isn't there?
I believe that there is one office.
Is there? I didn't see it. But it just, it looks like large blocks of space that don't, are not very, when you have 35 kids in 2,000 square feet and want to have a Bible study or a serious discussion around something, it's, it seems kind of odd. I mean, that's just a, and that leads to say, okay, we're being, are we being really transparent here because we have these big rooms, big, you know, big spaces, we have a potential occupancy of 325, you know, not to be the skeptic, I'm not questioning you at all, but it just, just looking at it from an architectural standpoint and that rolls right into the special use.
Sure. Can I address that? May, may I address that?
Of course.
Yeah. Have you ever been involved in middle school or high school youth ministries? They, they are very active and they are all over the place. And part of what we do, in fact, our youth pastor, I believe, is our youth pastor here? Yeah, our youth pastor is here as well and he can address this because he's the one that actually works with the kids. The activities for them can be a little rambunctious and space to move around and feel free and are, are a great asset, a great asset. And right now, the existing room that we have for our youth is a little constricted. So it, the, the space... So the space will be used and joyfully used, because there's a lot of movement in the games and the things that we do with the youth.
Let's see. I'm sure I'll probably have another one, so I'll pass to my peer.
Mr. Weisberg? Mr. Boyd?
I have a couple of questions, please. I noticed you have an agenda with a number of meetings with the youths. Are you conducting these meetings now, and where do you conduct these meetings?
Across the street, in the Christian education facility.
And these are the numbers that are currently participating in your meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so not an estimation of what's coming?
Correct.
Okay. And I just have a concern. On the, let me find my right page, in the background on the agenda item, you know, I want to ensure if we develop something like this for the City of Coronado, that no one is excluded. This would be available to all youths. And in there, there's the word that any and all Christian-worshipping communities and other Christchurch groups would have access to the facilities. Could we not just say, for all youths would have access to this facility and not limit it to Christian only?
Well, our intent-
I don't know if that's a big concern.
Well, and I appreciate that. Certainly, everyone would be welcome. Everyone would be welcome. There will be no sign saying, "I'm sorry, you may not come onto this facility if you are not a Christian."
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Did you think of something else? And thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Okay, we have that. Now we'll open it to public comment. If you could simply identify yourself and limit yourself to three minutes, that would be appreciated.
For having this forum. My name is Francesette Roder. I live at 960C Avenue. And although there are four condos there abutting the proposed project, only two of the five residents are able to attend. One is in her late 90s and never leaves her home. Another is starting dialysis, and as we speak, she is undergoing an operation for this. And the third is back east burying her husband. All three are Navy widows and have been good citizens of Coronado for a total of more than 100 years. All strongly object to this new project and would prefer the status quo. All four condos are forever homes for these residents. However, after meeting with both Pastor David and Father Mike Murphy from Sacred Heart, who are both board members of the Logos College, and also after carefully reviewing the agenda proposed by city staff, we would all agree to the acceptance of the special use permit if the following conditions were added to the ones that are presently in there. Only the youth of Coronado, and irregardless of faith, would be using the facility, and there would be an age-specific use only for middle and high school students, not college, not older. And as I believe Ms. Boyd mentioned, no smoking or alcohol on the premises, no wedding receptions. As it is clearly stated in the facility use of Logos College, given to me by Pastor David, quote, "Logos College is designed to promote the teachings of Jesus Christ and the practical application of Christianity among the youth of Coronado. This facility is built and should be only built for the youth of Coronado, not of the entire country." If these four simple additions are added to the conditions for approval of the special permit, we would withdraw all of our objections to this project. We are confident that the board of the Logos College and the City of Coronado would then be good neighbors, and keep in mind the welfare of the only abutters to this project, for whom these condos are their forever homes. Please treat them as you would your mothers, your sisters, your wives, and keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my concerns about the Logos development. My name is Dennis Quigley, I'm a longtime Coronado resident. I currently live in Granada Court, which is next door to the Logos site. I only know what I read in the Eagle Journal, but what I see of the published plans, it looks like a commercial development to me, with a religious fig leaf to cover of its actual use, to bypass zoning regulations against commercial development. And these familiar with this area realize that the religious organizations have already absorbed over 90% of the housing on the block. Since I live on the block, I don't want to see my housing absorbed, if you will excuse my reverence. I'm also concerned with the harebrained scheme to put 29 parking spots into the alley. I live next to the alley, and I walk out my back door every day, and I see, if they do that, you're going to put my life in danger, traffic congestion, and from what can only be described as chaos. Thank you for your kind attention to my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Stephanie. I'm here representing my mother and father-in-law, who couldn't be here today, Dutch and Peggy Swagamakers. They are the owners of Granada Court, which is two properties over from the corner, 936 to 954 C Avenue. You know, I hate to say it, because I think the intentions of this project are really good, so the main concern for my in-laws is that their property is designated historic and has zero parking spots for residents, zero. And that block already has, you know, half the block is no parking during the day for Christchurch School, half the block is two-hour parking. Our residents are getting tickets just for parking near their home. I guess you could say I am skeptical that with 10,000 square feet and a 320-person capacity, that 29 parking spots that are also available to the public will be sufficient, and we just really foresee a parking issue worse than it already is. So that would be our main concern with the project, is the parking. Clayton's customers can fill up the parking lot in 10 minutes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Rosania. I'm a longtime resident of Coronado, live on Isabella. I'm traveling down 10th Street almost every day. My main concern with this project is the increased traffic that's going to be caused. The actual application says that there will be an increase in traffic, and to me, any increase in traffic in that very congested area is a big concern for the safety of, you know, cars, bicycles, pedestrians. The residents actually call 10th Street Interstate 10th, because it's not a low-speed, low-volume street. It is a very congested, very busy street. And in looking at what is going to be the traffic flow coming out of the one-way alley, it's already very congested with delivery trucks, people renting bicycles at Hollins, people dashing across the street to go to Clayton's, you know, it's a chaos there quite often. And there's a new factor, though, that came up just last week. Across the street, a project parking plan was approved for the shops at Coronado that calls for cars coming directly out of an accessway on the other side of 10th, meeting the traffic flow from the Logos project in a very busy, congested area on 10th. So you've got two traffic flows coming at each other in a congested area, you know, what could go wrong with something like that? It's, you know, the point is, because that other project was approved, there's no way that this project can incorporate any evidence that traffic will be not adversely impacted. And when I look at the resolution, there's not one condition stating that there won't be an adverse effect on traffic. So in the light of this new project across the street that did get approved over sort of the objection of planning commission here, you failed to pass that here, but the city council unanimously approved that plan. Because that's in place, I don't see how we can say this won't create adverse traffic conditions with this new project. I mean, they actually stated, there's going to be 84 new trips per day. Any new trips is going to cause additional congestion in that area. And again, I travel it every day. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Katie Moore. We've owned our home here for more than 20 years. We understand that change is difficult, especially in a small town. We understand that we have large home and condos being built on small lots impacting our neighbors. We have big trucks, RVs, garbage cans, additional dwelling units impacting our narrow alleys. We have insufficient parking. We have inconsistent stop-and-yield signs. We have crazy angled streets that make visibility a nightmare. With these challenges, adults develop the NIMBY "Not in My Backyard" attitude. But as adults, we need to look past our occasional discomfort and address the needs of our children and our future. We raised our son here, he attended and graduated from our schools. As he grew up here, he, like a lot of the kids, would say, "There's nothing to do here." Not being a Navy family, he didn't have the ability to wander across onto the Navy base, go to the movies, the bowling alley, the batting cages, all the things they have to offer. He'd participate in the Little League and soccers, but those were scheduled events, not exactly activities he could do spontaneously. With that in mind, I can imagine that a youth facility in Coronado, not being a great asset, a place where middle and high school students can go and not be alone, a place where individuals can meet other individuals, a place where all types of individuals would be welcome, a place for kids that would have academic, musical, artistic, and athletic aspirations, a place where encouragement, inclusion, and tolerance is promoted, a place where kids would learn that exclusion, ignorance, tribalism, and bullying is not permitted, a place for our kids that would be supported and promoted by our community. I hope this is the vision for our community.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lance Rogers. Welcome, Ed Weisberg, to the dais. My concern is much about what you've brought up here today, a lot of questions. Some have been answered, but for the public, most have not been answered. I think we're premature in rushing to judgment on a major MSUP that'll have impact on the rest of the city for life. I think there should be a time for a community forum and a community discussion to address these multitudinous questions that we've only hit the tip of the iceberg on. I would implore you to kick this down the road for another time for further discussion, after the community's had a chance to be more involved in this discussion, both for traffic, but for safety. My children use Christchurch, my children used to use Graham, that block and the block further down with Sacred Heart are perhaps the most busy blocks in this city at school time. And I don't want to say that perhaps it's disingenuous that this is what it's going to be now, and tomorrow it will be another school for Graham, but it's very possible. There's nothing prohibited from becoming a day school for Graham down the road. And we have 320 children being dropped every day. My children also go to Silver Strand. That is a nightmare to put 320 people in one spot at one time, and that would be a complete and utter disaster for the traffic on that block. I think it were far too soon to determine what the highest and best use of this project will be at some day, or what could be without restrictions. And I implore you to take a step back and see if we've answered all the questions, not from your sake, but from the community's sake, before we make this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rita Surt, I'm the Director of Main Street, and I spoke about the parking plan to the Design Review Commission, and we hope that you will stay with a staff recommendation to have the entrance to the underground parking remain in the alley. Not only is it comply with the code, it's also a heavily impacted area, one of our most difficult places to park in Coronado, and to have any curb cuts to take away any parking is unimaginable. So I hope you will go with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bernie Roder, and I live at 960C Avenue. I did write a letter, which is in your package, on the 27th of January. I wanted to make two comments to that letter. In my next-to-last paragraph, I said one of the, I feel one of the solutions to the alley access was to try an access from C Avenue. I'd like to withdraw that recommendation, because the abutter, 964C, that would be very, very detrimental to her patio and her living conditions, so I would reluctantly have to say it's the alley or nothing. And the final paragraph, I said in my letter that, in summary, the abutting owners intend to vigorously oppose this entire project if the alley access ramp is pursued. I'd like to withdraw that statement, because it looks like it's the alley or nothing, and the abutters owners will not fight it if the alley is used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Sue Gillingham. I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm speaking because I am a tenant of one of the buildings that's going to be torn down. So if you guys would, like, not let that happen, I would prefer that. I'm just kidding. Because the church has been a great landlord. I just wanted to allay some of your fears about traffic in that wonderful alley, which is probably the second-most congested alley in the town. I back out of that parking lot two to three times a day. I've never hit anyone. None of the guys in Hollins that are renting bikes, most of the time they ignore me, but I have a little beep on my electric car. And I just wanted to point out that the buildings that are there, at any point in time during the day, there are 15 to 25 people in those buildings who have parked in our parking lot or in the adjacent streets. So I'm just not saying that there would be a huge difference in the traffic in that alley. It is, I appreciate Mr. Rosania's concern, even though he's, you know, a couple blocks down, that is not a very rational and uncongested street, but perhaps like Five Points, people pay a lot of attention to when they're coming in and out. And the concern about the Bueno Forte and their parking, coming straight out, well, that's where it comes out today. So I don't see a huge difference, and I just wanted to put that point out there. You have many things to consider, but- You have many things to consider, but I would, as a current user, I wanted to give you my impression.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
My name's Harold Myers. It seems to me that this prob, this project sort of got blown off track from its original idea. Both Lotus College was incorporated in 2013, and that's when TYL purchased the property. At that time, the religious beliefs of the Presbyterian Church, P C, Presbyterian Church USA, were in alignment with the contributions, the types of contributions, or the contributions to the types of organizations that the TYL Foundation contributes to. And I would consider, classify as both of those, as conservative Christian organizations. But what happened, just a couple years afterwards, is the Presbyterian Church USA became far more liberal. And as Pastor David had told me, they no longer considered the strict implementation of the written word of the Bible. Now, why am I telling you this? It's because that is why this project seems to be unclear and uncertain. Pastor David isn't going to be there forever. Probably, I've attended that church initially when it was Carson, and then we had Freberg. So pastors come and go. The population or the membership of the church has decreased by 50% in the last few years. That makes it difficult even to maintain your current church buildings. My question is, is what happens when the next pastor comes in? Young ambitious guy, and he says, I'm going to mend this church and I'm going to bring those members back, and I'm going to take more of a middle-of-the-road approach? Well, the McVeany's and the TYL Foundation might not agree, all right? So maybe it's going to be leased to somebody else. And that's why it's important that we know exactly and clearly who this is for, who's going to be paying for it, so that we know 10 years from now what types of uses will be made of that building. So if it's not spelled out in the conditions of the resolution, you can't say we won't have wedding receptions. It's not in here, all right? So make sure any of the conditions and the concerns that you've heard from people today are spelled out, or otherwise denied. But I agree with the gentleman that says, we need more information here. It's been very confusing, and I think even Pastor David, and I know his intentions are wonderful, but when he spoke, it came across to me as though he had owned the property, that this was his project. And he doesn't own the property. The church doesn't own the property. And we, we really should have heard from somebody representing TYL today, in my opinion. And maybe we can in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Anyone else, all right? And we'll close the public comment. And do the staff or the applicant wish to respond to some of the testimony we've heard?
Just say a quick word.
Sure.
A little bit of apologies for some of the confusion. I feel like some of that's related to the journey we went through, as Pastor David alluded to, in trying to define this project. And there were a lot of struggles with the old planning director, trying to get a commitment of how this project would move forward. And years and years and years of trying to progress this, we looked at different designs, different options, different ideas. That has helped lead to some of the confusion on this. Some of the uses that existed at one point are not there now. All of this, to the community's standpoint of concerns about what this could be, is all outlined in the conditions. So I think that shouldn't be a concern for you. This is conditioned, overly conditioned, to what they can do on this site. And regardless of who owns it, who manages it, they're going to have to live by the conditions that are in this ruling. So apologize for the confusion.
Can I ask him a question, please?
Mr. Ryan.
I asked this question before, a little bit before to the pastor. Could some, one of you tell us how long the ground lease is for? How many years is it for?
At this point...
I'm sorry.
At this point...
For the record?
For the record, the ground lease is...
Please begin the microphone. Thank you so much, so we can now make sure it's recorded.
At this point, the ground lease is one year at a time. Once a facility is built, I'm sure that we could get a 99-year lease if that would be requested and required by the, by the council. The question is, we don't have any, there, there's, there's no project approved yet. And so the, once we have a project, then that lease would be extended.
Just, my last question would be, okay, it's one year at a time. Is the property owner donating to your building fund?
I have no idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Then I'm going to ask the staff to respond to the issue of alternative uses. Should, should there not be a 99-year lease? What would be the restrictions on the use of that facility?
All of the restrictions are laid out in the resolution before you today. It doesn't matter who the owner is, they're all restricted to the limitations.
Cannot be used for commercial?
Correct. It's a residential zone.
I would like to add that pursuant to the municipal code section that we're discussing for major special use permits, there is a revocation process. If the conditions are not complied with, the city can go in and revoke the major special use permit. There's also a process for amending any special use permit. So I would suggest that should there be some change in use that varies significantly or, or to a substantial point from what is in the resolution, that permit could be revoked, or it would, they would have to come before the planning commission, again, and council to amend their permit.
Okay. As we mentioned earlier, we're, we're basically talking about parking, but the use of the building, if the, if the building is built, at what point, I mean, would we say that it has to remain idle? I mean, what would happen? If the building is built and there isn't a 99-year lease, and they lose their lease, what happens then? I mean, that affects parking.
Mr. Chairman, they would be entitled, if a new owner came to take ownership of the building, they would be entitled to continue the use as permitted, or any principally allowed use in that zone, which is basically residential uses. Anything else, they would need to come back to the planning commission and get some kind of discretionary permit approved.
Then we are going to close the public comment period and open it for commission discussion. Commissioner Ryan, do you want to start, or?
I have no comment at this point.
All right. Commissioner...
Chairman.
Uticus. Did you have a...
This gentleman, I saw his hand in the back.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I've already spoken, but there's been some issues brought up here that were not brought up prior to, to public comment, and they're pretty major issues.
Excuse me?
I, I think the public comment period is closed, and that, we'll discuss those issues now. Is that correct? Thank you. Commissioner Weisbrot?
I do have a few other questions. Additional condition 11. All activities in the Logos Youth Center will be concluded by 9:00 PM daily. I'm assuming it's based on the schedule that was provided. What if it's not the Logos Youth Center after a year or two? Sorry about that. Specifically, I had a question, my first question about condition number 11. Activities in the Logos Youth Center will be concluded by 9:00 PM daily. And I'm assuming that's based on the schedule that was provided. What if in two years, it's no longer the Logos Youth Center? There's, some of the language in here is generic enough, I think, especially, you know, banquet use specifically as well, to allow a lot of interpretation. So that would be my concern. To have more specific language in some of these conditions, which would be specific restrictions on it. And that's just, you know, number 11 and number 13. So, you know, what if it's no longer the Logos Youth Center?
Commissioner Weisbrot, the, the permit runs with the property. It doesn't run with the owner. So whomever owns and operates that use is subject to the conditions that this commission and ultimately the city council would impose. Secondly, there, there was suggestion during public comment, and I think it sort of alludes to what you were discussing about, you know, more restrictive conditions. The way that zoning ordinances and conditions work is that they are constructed in a permissive voice. We tell what an applicant or a use, how it can operate. We don't list the universe of things that they cannot do.
Okay.
So by virtue of us not saying they can do it, that limits the universe of activities that they are entitled to engage in at that property.
Okay. Additional question, then? Because I don't think I remember seeing it. Smoking, is it going to be allowed on the property?
It wasn't addressed in the conditions. That's, if the commission wants to add that, I believe you may.
Well, as a resident with somebody next door who may be smoking a lot, that would affect me personally. So I think it might be something to consider.
When and if there's a motion, we can add...
Okay.
Permissible amendments. Mr. Boyd?
Just, I have some questions about adding the conditions, and I don't know if it has to be specific wording, smoking being one of them, not allowed on the property. Clarification that the Logos Youth Center is only for the youth of the city of Coronado is that, how do we address that?
Commissioner Boyd, staff would have concerns with that condition, in so much as it's, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to administer and enforce that condition. You know, there would really be no way for staff to go out and verify, you know, students who probably don't have any form of photo identification, where they're coming from. Moreover, you know, I can imagine scenarios where a Coronado youth has a cousin visiting from across the bay and may want to participate. And I'm not sure we'd want to exclude other children from participating.
And, and I would agree with that. Thank you. I think perhaps the comment was brought up by one of our, our customers, that I think we don't want outside organizations coming in, you know, like just anywhere in San Diego coming in and saying, hey, there's a youth center in Coronado, let's go have a meeting there. I believe that that might have been the inference. I'm not sure. That's why I'm bringing it up and wanted to talk about it.
I think a condition which limited to organized, you know, community-type events or, or gatherings to be more focused at Coronado would be less problematic. Still difficult to enforce, but I imagine that's something that we could work with.
So how would you word that? What's the appropriate wording in adding something like that to the conditions?
You know, I, I, I wouldn't want to hazard a half-baked suggestion right here. I think it's something that we'd want to sit down, write out, and think about a little bit. If it is the commission's desire, my suggestion would be in your motion to direct staff to, or recommend to the city council that they look into that, and staff can prepare some draft condition for their consideration.
And then my final question on there would be no banquet use on site and no alcohol. Would that, could we add that verbiage to the condition?
I, we have some concerns regarding alcohol. I'm not quite sure that that's within our jurisdiction, as that is controlled by the state Alcohol Beverage Control Board. It's something that we can certainly look into, similar along the lines of the last recommendation, and include in, address in the council staff report if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Uticus?
Thank you, Commissioner. Occupancy back again. So if, if another organization ends up as a lesor of this property, they theoretically could max density on an event, right? There's nothing, there's nothing that says they cannot, we're not limiting the number of people that can use this facility at any given time in the special conditions.
Correct. In the conditions before you, there's no limitation on the number of people. That happens through the building permit process when the plans are looked at through the fire code and building code, and then the maximum occupancy loads are, are set for each room.
So in essence, you know, it, this could go to large-scale gatherings, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's, that is a, something that could easily happen. And if you look at those wide-open rooms, they're perfect for lining up chairs, having speakers, it's, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful facility. But there, we have to assume that that could happen, because we could have a change in ownership. And the landowner, that's one issue I have. I think obviously they've done some wonderful things. This is a major investment, if you look at their website. It's a major investment for them, is a philanthropic investment. And it'd be great for them to talk about their mission and their view of the world. And I, I trust Pastor David and, and what he's said about it, but that's, I think, what a lot of people in town are talking about in terms of a special use, is really that transparency. So the occupancy, and one final thing from a code standpoint, is there a difference between a church and philanthropy in terms of the city code?
Yes. They're separate uses, as well as a school is a separate use listed as well.
So if this is philanthropy, does it have some, it, it doesn't make any judgment around the type of philanthropy. It can be any kind. And so this has been, but it's been very designated as a Christian-based organization, so is it more of a church than a philanthropic organization?
Staff does not believe so.
One thing I'd like to say, too, and this with no judgment whatsoever, is this is private property, and we're just talking about the zoning of private property. All the judgment, that's where maybe the community issue comes in, because all of the other things are open to a forum of discussion about what's going to happen, who's going to be there. But we're talking about someone's private property and the zoning of that private property only. We can't make any judgments otherwise, right?
Correct. The planning commission needs to look at this project as is, without who owns it, what will be conducted there necessarily. It can't be denied or approved just on the basis of religion or, you know, who's using it.
Right. So my comment about that is not in support of the project, really. It's more in support of it's transparent and open forum, that everybody's comfortable, and maybe that's done. But it seems like there's an awful lot of conversation about this project, and that's the one thing that I think, I do support some of the public comment on, not to stop it, to make sure just everybody, because a lot of the issues that you're hearing people talk about have been addressed, but not everything necessarily. So sorry about the rhetorical question. Thank you.
Now, I want to focus, one, I, I have gone through the conditions several times. It seems to me that they're restrictive enough that whoever the owner is, they're going to be limited in what they can do. We know that they're limited in the capacity of people they can have there. Focusing on the parking, having used that, I use that alley every week when I take my dog to the beauty parlor. It is the only... It is, the only real difficulty I have in the alley is that Holland Bike tends to use it as a training ground for people learning to ride bikes or renting bikes. I think this is a much superior parking plan to what exists now. And it's going to take cars off the street, which I think is beneficial. And I'm satisfied that the restrictions are in place and will be adopted with this. If the commission wants to add alcohol or tobacco, I certainly would support that, but I'm satisfied with how it's laid out now. Is there any other further commission discussion? Then we are, we're going to close the commission discussion. And do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to propose a motion to add an additional condition stating that no smoking be allowed on the property.
All right. Do we vote on those independently?
It would be best if you vote as an entire motion. So if Commissioner Weisbrot could state he votes for approval or recommendation, I don't have the specific language in front of me, with the added condition that, that would be voted on.
Mr.? Are you going to vote on three items here, or all encompassing?
We're going to vote them independently, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. With the addition of the amendment on smoking, which I'm not sure, does state law, doesn't state law cover that already?
I believe state law covers smoking on premises indoors in a public, or in a commercial building. This isn't commercial. I don't know specifically, that's something we would need to look into.
If it's open to the public, which it is, this building is open to the public, although limited to groups with a similar ideology, but, so I would think that smoking, but I don't have any problem in adding that to it. Did we want to also, do I have a suggested amendment regarding alcohol?
And sorry, just to clarify Commissioner Ryan's question, the commission is welcome to vote on each item individually, or one motion to do them all, however the commission would like to proceed.
Did you have a preference?
No.
I was just, there's three agenda items, really, but there's one item, so we can vote on the whole thing.
Yes, you can. And just recognize that two of them are recommendations for City Council, and the coastal permit is a determination by the Planning Commission.
Okay, sure. I do have one comment, if I might. I've been listening, and I think the smoking is probably appropriate to limit that. Bread and wine in the Christian church is quite common, so I don't know how far we want to go with the "you can't have alcohol," because if they have adults there for some nice function, they may choose to celebrate.
Then with the addition of the smoking restriction, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve PC 2018-08 and CP 2018-03. Logos Youth Center, Logos request for a major special use permit, parking plan, and coastal development permit for the youth center at 970 C Avenue in the R3/P multifamily residential with parking overlay zone, with the condition to add and have the building become a no-smoking building.
All right. Now, does that cover all of the, or do we need to add the coastal zone? Or is that, let's see. No, that's the coastal zone. Okay. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right. Having a motion and a second, open the roll.
Question carried with Commissioner Uticus voting no.
We will call for the vote. The vote passes four to one. And unless there's other business to come before, we'll close the meeting.